I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a moment of silence, please. Go call true. Council President Steeritz.
Here.
Counselor Schneider.
Here.
Counselor Stickley.
Here.
Counselor Chamberlain.
Here.
Counselor Steeritz.
Here.
And Counselor Frye.
Here.
All present? Okay, thank you. Counsel has had time to review the prior meeting's minutes. Remove with the motion, please.
I'd make a motion to accept the minutes.
Second.
Counselor Stickley made a motion with Counsel Frye seconding to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Counsel President Steeritz.
Yes.
Counselor Schneider.
Yes.
Counselor Stickley.
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain.
Yes.
Counselor Steeritz.
Yes.
And Counselor Frye.
Yes.
All in favor of motion. Rick? Would you like to come up front?
We just skipped this part. Wait till they get the paddle on.
Rick! Okay.
One over here.
Rick Frye. The City of Waseon and Council and Administration would like to give this plaque to you as a certificate of gratitude, presenting to Rick Frye, Council member, in appreciation of your public service to the citizens of Waseon and putting up with all of us. We very much appreciate it.
I'm scared, so. I had a good smile at that.
But most of all, we want to wish you luck in your next endeavor over with the Township trustees.
Right.
Thank you so much for doing so. I need this part too, I guess I don't want to take that back.
Rick, you already said that's my chair.
The plaques will be moving soon. All right. Sorry. Someone's been sitting in my chair, I can tell I can't move it.
It wasn't me.
Okay, we have nobody wishing to speak at council tonight, so we'll move on to committee reports, and we'll start off with the Finance Committee, who's been very busy.
Finance Committee, consisting of Jeff Steeritz, Shane Chamberlain, and myself, met Thursday, December 5th, at noon in Council Chambers. Also present were Mayor Hewner, Jamie Jager, Keith Torvik, Kevin Chittenden, Michelle Kessler. The meeting was to discuss the 2020 budget. Those in attendance discussed and explained the various items in the 53-page document. Some changes, additions, and deletions were made to the draft of the budget, and at the conclusion of discussion, Counselor Chamberlain made a recommendation to accept the budget with the changes that were made, and the motion was seconded by Council President Steeritz, and it passed 3-0, and the meeting was adjourned at 2:07.
I have to say that was a pretty fast budget meeting. Very well.
I'd make a motion to accept the Finance Committee's recommendation.
Second.
Counsel Chamberlain made a motion with Counsel Frye seconding. Any discussion? Counsel President Steeritz.
Yes.
Counselor Schneider.
Yes.
Counselor Stickley.
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain.
Yes.
Counselor Steeritz.
Yes.
And Counselor Frye.
Yes.
Motion carries. Tree Commission.
It wasn't me. Tree Commission met, and they have three things on their agenda, but only one thing's coming to council. The thing coming here is the Indian Hill sign that's going to be placed at Lawrence Avenue. Their recommendation is to put it at the south side of the entrance to the park, and put it on a little bit of an angle. That's their recommendation.
Any motion to accept these recommendations from House Boards?
I'll accept that. Make a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Counselor Schneider made a motion with Counsel Stickley seconding. Is there any discussion? Counsel President Steeritz.
Yes.
Counselor Schneider.
Yes.
Counselor Stickley.
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain.
Yes.
Counselor Steeritz.
Yeah.
And Counselor Frye.
Yes.
Case no names, motion carries. Tree Commission.
Tree Commission met on December 11th, and we reviewed a list that Larry Frye had given us, and there was four different people went out and kind of looked at the trees that he had on this list for removal or pruning of some sort, and we kind of reviewed that and went over it and kind of gave our opinions on a few of them. Jim Spees had made mention that he'd like to see some more education coming out from Tree Commission in our local newspaper. We talked about doing some fertilizing, and kind of divvied up different areas that we would decide to do as individuals. And Kim had mentioned that her term was going to end at the end of this year, and she would not be renewing another term as Tree Commission. Jim Spees had said something of the same nature. We did talk about a few different names, knowing that ultimately the mayor would have to be the one making that decision. Also, there was a question whether or not I would be on that also, knowing that I'm resigning from the council, whether there'd be another council rep. I had told him at the council whole that I'd be glad to stay on that as a member-at-large if you decided what we do, keep that position. And that was about all the meeting was about.
I appreciate you offering that. That would be great. The one thing I was wondering about this recommendation, something that I always fall into when I'm trying to fill boards, do they need to be within the city limits or not?
Well, we do have a few people on now that aren't in the city.
Are not, I know. That's what I thought.
So, I don't know.
Work within the city, I think is what they look by before.
And there've been a lot of past members that have not been on that also. I'm not opposed to somebody not living in the city.
Right.
As long as they have an interest in trees.
It's not like, yeah, they're giving their time.
I'm not so sure that it's even written in any place where there is a.
Because we've always had, you know, from the extension office and stuff, and whether they live outside, they kind of came in through that, so.
Right.
Okay, great. And so really no recommendations?
No.
All right, thank you.
Go ahead, I do have a few names for you at the end of this meeting, if you want to.
Okay. That would be great. And let's move on then to our Personnel Committee.
Personnel Committee, we had a riveting meeting on December 12th. I spiced it up a little bit, right? December 12th, bright and early at 7 o'clock in the morning, we dealt with two issues, the handbook and the annual wage increase for city employees, not including fire and police since they're in the union business for everybody else, so we dealt with their annual wage increase. Starting off with the employee handbook, just two minor changes to our originally what would have been a recommended action to council tonight. Jamie Jager recommended that we increase her credit line limit, not hers specifically, but the finance director's credit limit to $10,000, so she'd be better equipped to pay a few bills, such as Bureau of Workers' Comp, Central Leak, and Spectrum, and then the maximum credit limit for other credit cards would be $2,500 for each department head. The other suggested change came from Sarah Wheeler. Sarah found within the handbook where we were missing the word "shall," and it was a pretty important "shall" in the accident section, how the city would respond if an employee were involved in an accident. The word "shall" was missing, and Sarah caught it and brought it to our attention, so we'll be adding that by way of recommendation tonight, hopefully. On the annual wage increase, Tom McWaters sort of shared with us what Mayor Hewner's thoughts were on the wage increase. Mayor Hewner had some other things come up. Tom McWaters shared with us the recommendation of a 2% pay increase across the board for full-time city employees, again, not including fire and police, with some merit increases as well. So I think it's going to look like possibly two recommendations. Let me see. Yeah, it looks like it's going to be a 2% across-the-board recommendation, and then some recommendations for various merit increases. On the merit side of things, there's 0.5%, there's 1%, and 1.75% merit increases available to city employees, and those merit increases are determined based upon evaluations conducted by their supervisors or department heads. Through that, you know, it looks like two employees are receiving a 0.5%, 16 employees are receiving a 1%, and 20 employees are receiving a 1.75% merit increases, so that will be in the form of a recommendation tonight to City Council. So I think that's about as good as I can do on a summary, Mayor. Any questions, feel free to fire away, but that's where we're at.
I do apologize for not being at this meeting.
Oh, it's all right, yeah.
I had a lot of stuff that I kind of dumped on Tom and didn't bring forward. I know there was some confusion on the percent increase, what I was requesting and what was as far put in, so possibly go into an executive on that, just so I can make clear what my request was. It will be very short for that. Okay, so we need some motions on this.
Yes, we do. I guess to clean things up from our previous council meeting, I'd make a motion to remove the Personnel Committee recommendation from the table.
And I would second that motion.
Counsel Chamberlain made a motion with Counsel Stickley seconding to remove it from the table. Any discussion? Counsel President Steeritz.
Yes.
Counselor Schneider.
Yes.
Counselor Stickley.
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain.
Yes.
Counselor Steeritz.
Yes.
Counselor Frye.
Yes.
6-0, motion carries. Motion to amend the Personnel Committee recommendations to include the changes to the section 6.07. Hold on, that's quite a thing. Okay, yeah.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Counselor Schneider made the motion with Counsel Chamberlain seconding to, for the personnel, or the other changes. Any discussion? Counsel President Steeritz.
Yes.
Counselor Schneider.
Yes.
Counselor Stickley.
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain.
Yes.
Counselor Steeritz.
Yes.
Counselor Frye.
Yes.
6-0, motion carries. I'm still reading, I apologize. Okay, motion to accept the personnel recommendation as we amended and moved by, that's what we should have been voting on, they're switched around up here.
Well, I think that's the right order.
Is it?
So the first motion was to take it off the table, the second motion was to amend their previous.
Yeah, but we also, I had a credit card in the middle of that, so that, I mean, that's all going through as one motion, credit card policy and Personnel Committee recommendations?
Yeah, we probably should have done.
So we made a recommendation of the handbook, and then we made a couple amendments to it, so this third one is to actually now accept the handbook.
That's what's in there.
Right.
The recommendations as amended.
The last one, oh, right.
We're on bullet three of the Personnel.
The reading of it almost seems backwards. Kind of, yeah. Yeah. It just doesn't make sense on how we're moving forward, but everything in this report is, I get it. Okay.
Now, even though we're voted on it, we're accepting the recommendation now.
Was that you making that motion?
No, I kept my mouth shut.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Who's going to second?
I'm going to second the idea.
All right. Counselor Stickley made the motion with Counsel Chamberlain seconding to accept the amended recommendation.
No, accept the Personnel Committee's recommendation.
The Personnel Committee.
We already voted on it, accepted it, we just got to second the recommendation now.
We have two different things. Counsel President Steeritz.
Yes.
Counselor Schneider.
Yes.
Counselor Stickley.
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain.
Yes.
Counselor Stickley.
Mr. Steeritz.
Yes.
Counselor Frye.
Yes.
6-0, motion carries.
I'm answering.
Okay, yeah, no, I'm not. You're not. Motion to accept the Personnel Committee recommendation to approve the full-time non-union employee wages increase and merit increase.
I would make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Counselor Stickley made the motion with Counsel Schneider seconding to approve the full-time non-union employees wage increase and merit increases. Any discussion? Counsel President Steeritz.
Yes.
Counselor Schneider.
Yes.
Counselor Stickley.
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain.
Yes.
Counselor Steeritz.
Yes.
Counselor Frye.
Yes.
6-0, motion carries.
Good job.
That almost took as long as a meeting. Okay, we're going to move on to department head reports. Chief Salo.
Okay, a couple things that I, the member activity report passed out before the meeting tonight, it's there in front of you. If you have any questions, why don't you let me know about that. First portion of our civil service test for entry level firefighter medic EMTs was held this last weekend, and we have the scored interview portions that complete this week prior to final list being submitted to civil service. And we'll be helping out with Santa Claus and the Depot starting this Wednesday, running through all of next weekend prior to Christmas, so the hours vary on that depending on the weeknight and the weekend hour times. To bring your attention to the Resolution 2019-29, that's for the fire agreement for Dover Township that we've got worked out, and I've got that here, so that went through just fine with Dover Township, and just getting the signatures and finalization on that with your approval. To bring you up to speed on the rest of the fire contracts, York Township and Pike Township have now decided that they no longer want the services of the City of Waseon Fire Department effective January 1st. So that essentially means that everybody that lives out on Canal 13 to the east at the city limits of Waseon, starting January 1st, will be getting the Delta Fire Department to respond to their location, and also Pike Township will also be getting those services also. So if you get questions about why that's happening, it's a financial decision based on York Township and Pike Township's decision to do that, not because, you know, we weren't willing to respond, so. And I'm sure you'll get questions.
Were we unreasonable on our ask, I mean?
Our ask was the 2.5 mil rate, the same rate that everybody in Dover Township and Clinton Township pays for fire service, so, and that was simply, they decided they didn't want to ask their voters for a raise in their mileage, so that's the decision they made, and that rests with them. Personally thinking it's a dangerous decision on their part, but it wasn't my decision to be made, so.
So everybody on the east side of 13 is York Township?
That's correct.
How far they used to go, Waseon used to go on?
Just go to Canal 11.
Canal 11.
Yeah, it's always been that way since they established.
York is the one that has a lot of area to cover, correct? Is it York or Pike?
We cover, currently cover about 6.5 square miles of Pike, and then we cover about 14 to 16 square miles of York Township.
Right, it's a lot.
So we cover the, oh, we essentially cover the whole township from the Canal 11 to the west to Canal 13, yeah.
So what's Delta's mileage, they're a lot cheaper?
Apparently they're mileage, and, as I believe, I just, I think they just got an increase in November, and I think they're up to like 1.5 mils.
1.5.
And we've been working with York Township, all the townships, since May of 2016, telling them that we needed to increase to cover costs, and as, the more we talked to them, the less they responded. Finally, this year, early this spring, they were given, here's what we're going to do, and then this is their decision. So they've had plenty of time to discuss it, they've had plenty of time to make up their decision, they just notified us of their decision last week, so.
What's the, do you still have the percentage of calls that we took like just last year for Pike and York and?
I don't have it off the top of my head, but it's all in these.
I didn't get that.
Yeah.
So, all right. Any other questions for you? Chief Chittenden.
I'm going to start off, Mayor, Council, asking for everyone to kind of give thoughts and prayers to one of our former auxiliary officers. This last Friday night, Sam Yeo, he was an auxiliary officer for us for a little over a year, was involved in, an officer involved shooting down in Ozark, Alabama, where he's currently a police officer at. Sam was shot a few times and is now currently in critical condition down there in a hospital in Alabama, so. Sam worked with us from July of 2016 to October of 2017 as an auxiliary officer. I just wanted to kind of send our thoughts and prayers to Sam as he tries to fight through this. On a much happier note, our Christmas for Kids was also on Saturday, we were able to get 51 kids through. We had one family not show up and one family come in that was, had some mix-up with the paperwork and wasn't really by, so we were able to get them in, so that brought our total of 51 kids. Sounded like everything went off great. Being our third year now, we're kind of working out some of our kinks and making it a little smoother for the officers and the kids as far as getting cards and getting through the parade all the way out there, so everything went well. Just want to say thank you to all the first responders that came out, all the fire departments and police departments in the county who were there with the representative, as well as the state highway patrol, life flight. Anybody else says all hands?
Sharon.
Really good shirt, yeah. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you for sharing, Officer Yeo, for keeping one of hers. Any questions for Chief Chittenden?
Okay. Lease pickup is finished, or is finished as of today. If anybody still has leaves, you can take it out to the drop-off behind just K corner of Napa Auto Parts and behind Brett Tony, Auto Parts Towing.
Brett Stone.
Tone. They will start back up with brush pickup first of the year after the holidays due to the short weeks, and once they get things set up, as long as we don't get too much snow. Finishing up on getting all of our goods in for our different improvements out front of the building, as well as one from Arcadis for our small reservoir. We have some erosion issues on the small reservoir, it's nothing that needs to be taken care of this instant, that it's not going to collapse or anything like that, but we do want to prevent it before it gets more costly. That will be about a $200,000 fix to take care of that, to shore that up, and to take care of some other embankment issues along the reservoir. Also, the Ohio Plan through Highland Group formed a safety inspection for us back late October of the, all the playground equipment in all of our parks. They did it for free, and we were able, yes, we like free. But we have been able to get about 75% of all their suggestions taken care of. Several of the items have been pulled from the parks and taken and back into the shops so they can work on it in the wintertime, and at spring we should have almost 100% of them taken care of. There's a couple of the older pieces of equipment that we don't know if we can even find parts for anymore, so it may be something that we're going to have to look at changing them out here in the next year. The one is at North Park, that is still one of the older pieces of equipment that we still have there, so we may be looking at changing that out in the next year too. And I think that's it, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Questions? Thank you, Kate. And Jamie is not able to make the meeting tonight, so, yeah.
Okay, so I guess I take my time just to make a couple comments about two of the resolutions that are before you. 2019-31, that is the wage increase, which includes the two parts that were included in Council's written recommendation, I guess, that is the 2% and the merit increases. Also, we talked about, I think, that the Personnel Committee, it doesn't really necessarily need to be part of the recommendation, but under the compensation plan, Council has to, on a yearly basis, decide whether or not to adjust the wage scale based on the CPI, and Jamie's recommendation, based on the CPI for the relevant time period, was to keep the wage scale flat because of the low, of the non-change, I guess, in the CPI, or maybe it was even negative, I'm not sure. So you'll see that that's in Section 3 of the resolution, so that's, again, the wage scale doesn't really affect an employee's actual wage, it's just the scale, you know, the minimum, mid-range, and max. So I just wanted to point that out, and the other resolution kind of snuck in there after we council the whole met, I think that's 2019-32, and essentially, long story short, as Counselor Chamberlain knows, worked diligently, I'm sure, with Scotty too, the cemetery board is entering into a lease for a cell tower out of the, behind the building that was built out there, and as part of that lease, the folks wanting the lease, of course, needed an access easement just to get back and forth, and because the city actually owns that property by statute, I think the mayor is the proper person to sign that lease, and so, or the, I'm sorry, the easement, and so I reviewed the easement, had my, we had our title guys look at it, and it's fine, but just to be official, dot the i's and cross the t's, we have a resolution here for Council to authorize the mayor to sign that easement. It's basically just an access easement to go in, and I think it's a stone drive that goes in to the back there.
It does.
Yeah, okay.
And just to clarify, it's not really a tower, a big, tight, tall tower, it's like more of a six-foot satellite.
Oh, okay.
So it's not very, you wouldn't even notice, you're not going to notice it, because they're going to put a fence around it, so.
Is that for like internet for the office in there, so you guys can watch?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Work productivity's going to go down.
The new guy is our Netflix in there.
We need air conditioning too. Sitting at a.
Why do you care?
Anyway, so that's what that's all about, and I will also say, just Derek, the clerk, did an awesome job working on that lease and getting it revised and getting it to the board, and so needs to be commended for his hard work on that. Appreciate working with him on that, so. I think, oh, I guess the other thing, one last thing I do want to say, Kathy mentioned the need to go into a short executive session to talk about a couple of wage increases. Those have to do with her recommend, or her interest in increasing slightly the wages of two employees, which withstand unless Council wanted to, by a 3/4 vote veto that, but she wanted to present, I think we, I presented it for her in the executive session in Personnel, but there was some uncertainty as to the exact amount she was asking, and so she's prepared to clarify that in a short executive session when Council, if Council is so inclined. So that, but that's different from what you're voting on in terms of the resolution, which is you guys actually have to affirmatively approve that for the 2% and the, and the.
Merit.
The merit raises, yeah. So hopefully I haven't confused you on all that. Any questions? Shane? It's that 7 o'clock meeting. We've got a lot done, though.
We did.
Busy 45 minutes.
Okay, no questions, let's move on to our legislation, we have quite a bit. Ordinance 2019-8, annual appropriations for fiscal year ending December 31st, 2020.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Counsel Schneider made a motion with Counsel Stickley seconding to place, ordinance 2019 on final, oh, annual appropriations for fiscal year ending December 31st. Any discussion? Counsel President Steeritz.
Yes.
Counsel Schneider.
Yes.
Counsel Stickley.
Yes.
Counsel Chamberlain.
Yes.
Counsel Steeritz.
Yes.
Counsel Frye.
Yes.
6-0, motion carries. Okay, Resolution 2019-29, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Dover Township for fire services and declaring emergency.
I would make that motion.
Second.
Counsel Stickley made a motion with Counsel Steeritz seconding to place Resolution 2019-29 on emergency. Any discussion? Counsel President Steeritz.
Yes.
Counsel Schneider.
Yes.
Counsel Stickley.
Yes.
Counsel Chamberlain.
Yes.
Counsel Steeritz.
Yes.
Counsel Frye.
Yes.
6-0, motion carries.
Final reading? Second.
Counsel Frye made a motion to place on final reading, and Counsel Steeritz seconded. Any discussion? Counsel President Steeritz. Counsel.
Yes.
Steer, or Counsel President Schneider, Counselor Schneider.
Yes.
Counsel Stickley.
Yes.[1775.92]
Counsel Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counsel Steers?
Too many S's.
There it is. Counsel Frye?
Yes.
Okay, six oh, motion carries. All right, ready? Resolution 2019-31, approving a wage increase for full-time non-union employees and declaring an emergency.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Counsel Frye made the motion with Counsel Steers seconding to place resolution 2019-31, declaring an emergency. Counsel Steers? Counsel President Steers?
Yes.
Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counsel Steers?
Yes.
Counsel Frye?
Yes.
This is where it's getting bad, and it started the other.
Final.
Trudy's going to make it sooner or later.
Final reading, was that you?
Steve.
And Jeff seconded.
We'll keep it down, because then make it easier for you.
Counsel President Steers?
Yes.
Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counsel Steers?
Yes.
Counsel Frye?
Yes.
Six oh, GAs, no N's, motion carries. Resolution 2019-32, authorizing the mayor to execute a utility and access easement pertaining to a cell tower lease on the Wasean Union Cemetery property and declaring an emergency.
I would make that motion. Second.
Counsel Stickley made the motion with Counsel President Steers seconding to place resolution 2019-32 on emergency. Any discussion?
Yeah, just real quick. I mean, 2019 has been a crazy year at the cemetery board for the last 35 years or so. It's been pretty quiet. We've had the same person in place. So, Scott's going to be retiring, but Derek Heising, our clerk, has just done an outstanding job in going through the hiring process that hasn't been visited in 35 years, and then dealing with the, the cell tower lease. So, if there was anybody that deserved that, boy, Derek Heising deserved one. I just want to make that note tonight. So, yeah, thank you.
Counsel President Steers?
Yes.
Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counsel Steers?
Yes.
Counsel Frye?
Yes.
Six A's, no N's, motion carries.
Final passage.
Second.
Counsel President Steers made a motion for final passage. Counsel Schneider seconded. Counsel President Steers?
Yes.
Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counsel Steers?
Yes.
Counsel Frye?
Yes.
Six A's, no N's, motion carries.
Second.
Counsel President Steers made a motion for final passage. Counsel Schneider seconded. Counsel President Steers?
Yes.
Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counsel Steers?
Yes.
Counsel Frye?
Yes.
Six A's, no N's, motion carries.
Second.
All right, we have nothing under second reading and/or third reading. Under new business, let's see, we need to authorize the Director of Finance to pay all the bills to December 31, 2019.
I would make that motion. Second.
Counsel Stickley made the motion with Counsel Steers seconding to pay all the bills through December 31. Any discussion? Counsel President Steers?
Yes.
Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counsel Steers?
Yes.
Counsel Frye?
Yes.
Six A's, no N's, motion carries.
Final passage.
Second.
Counsel President Steers made a motion for final passage. Counsel Schneider seconded. Counsel President Steers?
Yes.
Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counsel Steers?
Yes.
Counsel Frye?
Yes.
Six A's, no N's, motion carries.
Second.
All right, we have nothing under second reading and/or third reading. Under new business, let's see, we need to authorize the Director of Finance to pay all the bills to December 31, 2019.
I would make that motion. Second.
Counsel Stickley made the motion with Counsel Steers seconding to pay all the bills through December 31. Any discussion? Counsel President Steers?
Yes.
Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counsel Steers?
Yes.
Counsel Frye?
Yes.
Six A's, no N's, motion carries.
Second.
All right, we have nothing under second reading and/or third reading. Under new business, let's see, we need to authorize the Director of Finance to pay all the bills to December 31, 2019.
I would make that motion. Second.
Counsel Stickley made the motion with Counsel Steers seconding to pay all the bills through December 31. Any discussion? Counsel President Steers?
Yes.
Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counsel Steers?
Yes.
Counsel Frye?
Yes.
Six A's, no N's, motion carries. Thank you. All right, we have nothing under second reading and/or third reading. Under new business, let's see, we need to authorize the Director of Finance to pay all the bills to December 31, 2019.
I would make that motion. Second.
Counsel President Steers?
Yes.
Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counsel Steers?[1798.11]